Be it resolved that the meeting be called to order and that the agenda for the meeting be adopted and circulated? Could I have a mover, please? Could I have Councilor Kleiber move and Councilor Barchetti second? Can I call for the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, carried. Going down to 3.1, public hearing. Be it resolved that the meeting for council recess by the purpose of holding the 2023 financial plan public hearing? Could I have a mover, please? Councilor Campbell moves, gonna have a second or? Councilor, Councilor Pakkan seconds it. Could I have any comments, questions? Hearing none, can I call for the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? None, carried. So I'd like to welcome everybody for coming to tonight's 23 financial plan presentation and public hearing. The public, this is a public notice is what we have done. The public notice is hereby given pursuant to subsection 162.2 of the municipal act that the Council of the Rural Municipality of West Saint Paul intends to present its financial plan for the fiscal year 2023 at the public hearing at the municipal office 335, 3550 Main Street in the RM of West Saint Paul, which is today, April 20th, at 6:00 PM. The financial plan is also now available for review. Persons wishing to view the financial plan may view it, the documents during the regular business hours of the municipality office or at 350, 350, 3550 Main Street, West Saint Paul, or on the municipal website, which is right over there. This is also, the objectives for tonight's hearing is that the presentation will be a general overview of the 2023 financial plan. There'll also be an opportunity for questions regarding the 2023 financial plan following the presentation. When the presentation is complete, we want to hear from the residents and we encourage residents to sign and to sign up and also to receive frequent communication from the RM with our email notices or email blasts. Putting together the financial plan, we had a team of people, one of them will go in order. It's Lainey Shaw, she is our acting administrative officer and a municipal legislative officer. Crystal Shadai, thank you. Director of Finance, Dave Romano, the acting director of infrastructure. We have Pamela Elias, she's the director of planning and economic development. The Mayor Geddes, the recreation director, and Ryan Yakon, he is our fire chief. And of course, there's our council, we're all present here tonight. I don't know if you want me to introduce them, but it's Dorothy Kleiber, Mike Pakkan, George Robashudi, and Peter Campbell at the far end. So basically, this is going to be the outline for tonight. It's the agenda, importance of financial planning, financial planning process, the connection to communities, strategic plan, benefits of growth, benefit, public budget balancing act, general operating expenditure, 2023 capital and special projects, and important dates and information. The importance of the financial plan is to ensure that resources are directed where needed most, maintain current infrastructure and plan for the future renewal, prepare for current and future growth, changing demographics of the municipality, the region and the province, community feedback, council priorities, and provide service and programs. It is also council's responsibility to approve and monitor the budget. As members of council, we have a duty to ensure that your tax dollars are managed carefully and transparently. Next, we have the financial plan process. As you can see, we started off with the preliminary budget prepared by the departments. Adjustments were made by senior management, council members had budgets submitted, the prepared draft budget was done, then there was a presentation by the departments. Council had educational briefings, there were about four in total that we had, so it was a well-talked-about topic. It was very engaging, no one held back. We had the staff enjoy it and talk back and give their input, so it was a very productive meetings, all of them were. The budget was revised, we prepared the financial plan, and now we are at our public hearing. And then later on, there will be a bylaw introduction and adoption, that will be after the public hearing, and then the budget will be set. In addition, we also had our financial priorities established. One of them was through community vision, and you can see that basically what we all have as a vision, fire department, pedestrian bridge, we have the school that we have, the commercial area and the boat dock, the boat lines that we have here, the Royal Cat Club, right? Yes, right. There was also our community mission. The RM of West Saint Paul is a beautiful, family-oriented community where everyone is welcome and connections are valued. There is also the strategic plan that we were looking at, so there is, you can see they're broken down into four areas, community, service, environment, and governance. So basically, community is to promote community safety through enforcement, education, prevention, and emergency preparedness. Service is to expand and enhance municipality facilities to provide better service for residents. Environment is to enhance and develop green space to provide outdoor options and provide healthy lifestyles. And governance, work hard as a team on our role as council members and administrations and staff to develop and nurture trust within the community. There is also what we had a benefit of managed growth. The growth has provided us with what you see up here, or some of the examples of what we see. We've given new equipment to the fire department, we have beautification of the municipality, we've purchased equipment for snow removal and for street repairs, we have alongside the trails, we have a beautification project underneath the bridge, play structure, two pedestrian paths that we have, where one is working and the other one is in the process of being done. Garbage pickup, you can see that the garbage pickup team is a very dynamic team. There's an area of roads starting showing repair and also the signs that we have, as an example, in Rivercrest. The next to see is that's where we have grown since 1966 to where we are in 2023, and right now, we are at 6,600 individuals living in West Saint Paul, where we started off at 1,623 people way back in 1961. One of our biggest challenges is trying to balance the budget. It's a very tough act. If you see by this graph over here, if you want high taxes, means that we have low density and we want stable service, which creates high taxes. If we want low taxes, we need more density and we want, we do not want to cut any services, so that, or we have to cut services. But that doesn't exist to get that middle part, so we have to try and balance it all the way through. The other challenge that we had this year was cost of our controls, the impact of the cost of living increase, and other factors that are beyond our control. They include provincial cessi levies, provincial assessment levies, insurance, fuel, and hydro and gas. And basically, on this side, you'll see that gasoline has increased 35% with the municipality, energy, which is heating for the buildings, and gas for the buildings is 25%. Furniture is 12%, financial services, which is the banks, is 6%, vehicle purchases is 8%, and insurance premiums were 14%. The cost of living increase for Canada was 6.8, and in Manitoba, it was 7.8. So despite all that, oh wait, I missed a slide here, I see. So this year basically shows you the cost of living for the last 2018, 2019, 2021, and '22, and you'll see that the difference is, is this light blue is Manitoba, the dark blue is Canada. And those are coming off of stats from both Canada stats. So just, with all those challenges, we were able to decrease the mill rate, decrease the mill rate, take into consideration requests from various departments, council requests based on residential feedback, and our strategic plan. The challenge we face for such a cost, such as cost of livings and many other factors, council is happy to present this budget with a decrease of the mill rate, of the mill rate. So the mill rate is going down to 7.855. Now, how does that translate into what we've done over the years? Is that if you take a look over here, the mill rate in 2019 was 8.77, and 2020 was 8.9, 9.1, stayed the same over two years. We're now down to 8.4, sorry, 7.85, which is a 13.7% decrease. And also, our assessments has also been going up, as you can see, it went up roughly 8% in 2020, 4.8% in 2021, 9% in 2022, and down to 19, it went up 19.3% in 2023. The reason for that is because we had a reassessment year in conjunction with growth and development in the municipalities. So residents, so basically, just to give you guys a picture of where we saw what we, like this is one of the things that we were looking at in council, and so we went ahead and we took one, two, three, four, five, six properties in West Saint Paul. They are properties that actually live here, and you can see that this is the taxes they paid in 2022, with their assessment is this year now in 2023, it's up. So now they're paying these taxes, or they'll be paying those taxes in 2023. That will give us, what you can see here, there's a change in assessment for these properties, so they are 12% assessment pay here, 8, there 7%, there 60% here, and 9.3. So their taxes, you'll see that there are some, they vary, I guess, the one that only went up was this one over here, and the reason that one was up because their assessment was, had an increase of 15.9%, which is typical, you'll never get the same assessments across all the years, increases depending on the rates that they used in that area. So it is, we're, we feel comfortable that a large portion of the population, a very large portion of the population will get, will see a decrease. There may, the odd one would be that one here that is only up $5, which is minimal, or minimal compared to, is a minimal amount compared to what you're paying, I guess. So the next on the slide is municipal tax dollars. So the average residential property is assessed at $503. It calculates out to 503,000, I should say, so 503,000, .45 is the assessment portion of your, what they take, and this is applied by the mill rate of .0075 is $1,779.39. So all that, all this tax is what, the services that we provide for that, and it equates to $148 a month is what the rate is, the taxes will be. And that is equivalent to dinner for two, family night movies, monthly insurance, or a tax of gas, and you know, I just filled up my car this last week and it was 100 bucks. I mean, it seems to be realistic there. The next slide is service provided with your tax dollars, so these are all of the service that is provided with our tax dollars. You'll see that just street cleaning, East Inle Lake Watershed District, access center seven days a week, traffic services, signage, bylaw enforcement, economic development, and cops. I'm a member of cops, just so you know, but cops is a very, we have also a representative from cops, that's, a council that sits on the board of cops. And you know, cops is a very good program, they are part of the police services, they provide you protection, they watch out for illegal activities, and they're always looking for volunteers, so they are very good, they are well worth it. At one time, they said that people did not come to West Saint Paul because the cop program was so active here, that was a couple of years ago. The next is assessment increases versus tax decreases. You'll see that for the last couple of years, it was pretty well running parallel, and because of the assessment increase and tax decrease, you can see there's a big divergence now from that. So the other thing that we put together is, is that just to say where our, where our tax dollars are coming from. So you'll see that roughly residential in 2022 was 79.3%, now it's 81.2%. Farmland is 2.7%, it went down by 2.2, it went down to 2.5. Institutional is 1.9, it went down to 1.6. Institutional, just so you know, includes schools and the complex across the road, the senior center across the road. And then there's others which include railways, commercials, and recreational, and it went down, it's 14% of, 14.6% of our assessments. The 2023 budget overview is, is this, the taxes that the municipality will collect will be somewhere around $5.7 million. Seven Oak School Division will collect somewhere around $9.6 million, and Inle Lake will collect $200,000. And you can see over here from '22 to '23, there was an increase of $113 million, and it was an increase of 19.3%. So this is, I'm going to spend a bit of time in this year, because this is what we get confused with sometimes, is that on the tax bill, there are two, you'll see two for school tax and municipal tax. So this year shows you that for every $100,000 of assessment portion, the municipality pays 353, collects, sorry, collects $353, and education gets $662. So that means of the total tax bill that you get, 35% of it goes to the municipality, 69% of it goes to the school division. This is the way that the tax bill will show, so you'll take a look here, there's municipal taxes, got school taxes, this is the final school tax up over here. So there's 17,000, 1,779, and educational portion is 3,333. So you can see by this one tax bill, the education portion is almost double the taxes that we as a municipality collect. So education taxes are not within the municipality's control. If there's questions that you want asked about the education levies that they collect, this is the Seven Oak School Division number. The school trustee is Tiffany Winchar, that's her email address, and that is her contact Next on the slide is the general operating expenses, so you can see where we are in general operating expenses. We were at 6.8 million in 2022, we are up at 7.8 million roughly, so we've increased our operating expenses by a million dollars. A lot of that has to do with the additional labor that we've put in. There is a new staff that we're hiring, more or less so that we maintain the service that is in place. So this is now a breakdown of service cost per school. So as the last census that we had in West Saint Paul, they showed that we had 2,270 homes. Current count, according to our company that picks up the garbage, says that there's 2,331. So what are the costs per home, broken down by service, as you can see, fire, emergency services is $27 a month, snow clearing was $5.97 a month, garbage and recycling is $17.73 a month, access center, the recreational center that we have, is $18.53, and grass cutting, including parks, is $1.25 a month. The project that we have scheduled for this year is going to be close to about $8.8 million. These here that are marked as CO means that they were carried over from last year because of supply constraints, basically, sometimes we couldn't get it, like tree planting we wanted to do, and we didn't get that till October, from what I remember, if I'm right, yes? And then by then, it was, it was too late, they were waiting all summer for trees and it never came about. We also have on here is speed control, that is something that Councilor Kleiber was pushing, and that's what she pushed forward in the budget also for this year. Projects for 2023 also has continued on, so these are now the current ones, where it says PRI, that's the ones that we were doing this year. So there, you'll see the list of some of them all. There are probably two that I'll bring out, and one of them is lighting around the pond, that is what Councilor Barchetti was asking for. And this year, food recycling program is something that we had a delegation come in. Both Councilor Kleiber and Councilor Pakkan were very eager to this, this is a very good program, it's, it's a very neat system, and we're looking at, basically why it's in here, because we're looking at funding part of it for the residents, so there's going to be cost sharing agreement, or not cost sharing agreement, but you pay X amount, we pay so much, and you get this unit. And it's a, it's basically a composter, an in-house composter. Here is probably, the next one is roads, road projects, so these are all the roads that are going to be repaired, there's going to be a couple that we are spending a fair amount of money on. One of them would be Naugus and Herman Road, Moore, which is, Moore Road, which is what the Councilor Kleiber was asking for. No, sorry, Councilor Campbell, apologize for that, thank you. And then there's Miller Road, so we're not, basically, Councilor Pakkan was eager to get Miller Road done. We were concerned on how the road was constructed, so we're going to be doing testing this year so that we know what the cost of it will be when we want to do it in the 2024 budget, that's when we're slated to do that. Also, we still have to finish up on Merritt Crescent and Saint Paul's Boulevard, which is in the business park. This was supposed to be done last year, but because of the highway department working with the lights and the intersection, it wasn't able to get done. That project, I understand, is supposed to be done, completed by June this year, and once that is done, then the business park will get roads fixed up also. So this is now the, all the projects that we have in a park, in, for the parks. So in 2010 and 2022, this is the amount that we spent already in our 2023 budget, this is where we are. There are probably two big ones that you see, one is the access center, because there is a fair amount, there's a curtain that we want to put in that's going to divide part of the auditorium, and then there is underground irrigation system that we want to do, or something that they started last year or a couple of years ago, and now we just want to carry it to make it done. And also, this one here is land that we're looking at purchasing in Whistle Hollow for our park. So that will be in the works for this year. This is the revenues to reserve that were done in 2022. You can see that we have a total reserve of 20 million. So all our projects, all our costs this year is going to be roughly totaling around 10 million, so next year, we'll probably wind up somewhere around 10 million. This year, we look, we're looking to put in $1.1 million into reserves. So with all the developments that we have, we do collect funds for the reserve also. For every 100 lots, we get $14,000, $100 per lot, we'll get $1.4 million in revenue going into reserves. We also receive grants. There are some that are, I'm going to say, given to us or that we don't have to apply for, but there are a lot that we have to apply for, and one of the persons that does a lot of the work for that on applying for it is our recreational director, which is the Mayor Geddes. And then we also have our financial clerk and chief, fire chief also applying for grants. So some of the grants that are applied for would be the Canada Summit Jobs section, I should bring this paper here, because now I know what it is, would be Canada Summit Jobs Sector Support, provincial patch on removal, that we have to show how many trees we cut down or remove, and then they give us quarterly. This is a continuation from the previous slide, so you can see that the total grants we received this in 2022 were $2.7 million. So it was good work that the Mayor did and all the other ones. So now, these are the important dates to remember, so Friday, September 29th, that's the last day that you pay, that's the date that the taxes have to be in, by 4:30 sharp. You can do online banking, but you have to allow at least, it's best to leave five business days, because sometimes it gets snagged and it doesn't get there. Normally, over the last few years, they'll tell me it's done in less than that, like three days, but you know, allow five days for sure, and then you know that's safe. And if there is, if there is late payments, then it's a 1.2% per month for unpaid taxes. For assessment deadline appeals, it's October 16th, 2023. Border revisions, we'll meet about those revisions on November 1st, and our business tax rate is 1.2%. And that concludes the financial plan. So tonight, we'll be giving first reading of the financial plan, and third reading will be scheduled for April 22nd. 27th, yes, thank you very much. The financial plan, so let's see, okay, so I guess now we're going to go into, I'm going to let you, if you don't mind.
Yes, so our presentation, the financial plan presentation has concluded, as the Mayor has said, so at this point, council would receive any comments for the financial plan. We don't have any registrants for the financial plan. We also don't have any registrants against the financial plan, so this evening, we'll start with those registered for information, and Norma Alberg is registered. Do you wish to speak?
Norma Alberg, 312 Allen Avenue, West Saint Paul, thanks for the presentation.
Thank you.
I have registered for information, I'm not against the plan. I'm disappointed with how it was done, I feel that the notice to the public was very minimal, and I think the legislation sets parameters for a lot of this activity, and we can do better by choosing to go above that low bar that's set. So there was just the one very small notice for West Saint Paul in the South Creek Record last week at the meeting on April 15th. The plan had not been up on the website by mid-afternoon, and it did say that it would just be out for April 12th, and I had assumed then that it would be there for April 15th in the morning, but I think that the longer you give the information to the public, the more that they're able to comprehend it and have some input. There are other RMs that certainly choose to leave the longer period of time, that put the notice out, that they may or may not use their mail blast to refer to the email blasts in the start of the presentation, and I think this would be an important piece of information that could have come up when it was initially posted on the website back in March, March 23rd. So it's easy enough when people have signed up, it is, and then just be more proactive and send that out rather than passively hoping that somebody will or will not find it on the website. The mill rate is down, as we would expect with all the increased number of properties. Under the controllable purposes within the package that we had for us, so this would be on page three, under the bylaw, in that package, I would ask- on page three, under the bylaw, in that package. I would ask regarding K, Mr. Rapids, and O, Waldor Stone, on page three, which properties those do include that would have that label on their on their property, because there's no notice in the bylaw for Mr. Rapids or for Waldor Stone. Then on the move into the financial plan, on page one, I'm not sure. It shows at very bottom that it is a deficit. Last year showed that it was balanced eight to zero. So my question is just showing that deficit, does that have any implications? How does it get collected? Or does it just sit there for that purpose and what happens to it? On page two, under the grants, and I know these are not predictable, but there's quite a large difference in in what was expected and what came in. There could be some comment about where those came from. And are they are they ones that could be anticipated in the future? Or were they one-ups? Sort of a landmark I'm not going to see again. And on page three, on budgeted expenditure, I'm wondering, I see about a 10% increase there. I think you alluded to some of the increased staffing that would be in there. I'm also wondering where the council indemnity would would fall in those budget lines. We know that the first reading of the indemnity bylaw has come forward. The document with that is not complete, and I have completed it. I have a lengthy four-page one.
Sorry.
So when it when it does get standardized to the population, which then makes it comparable, you can't really compare things until you have standardized them. And there isn't really a catch-up to be had. The council, compared to the colleagues in both the Red River District and the greater Little Bay Metro region, are doing well. And I don't begrudge any of them the wages salary that are coming in in any job. We just want to get the best performance for everyone so that the the community can work together and we can get better. And that's what I would encourage here. On page nine, I'm not sure what this sundry revenue and expenditure, what that does mean. And the one thing I notice is a very large increase in the mill rate from what was 9.104 across all of them last year, and now to large numbers in the twenties and threes. So if I could just be explain what those are and why that large increase in the mill rate. And also, it's titled revenue and expenditure. There's a large change from last year in the total. So is that is that good revenue for us? Or is it bad expenditure for us? Which one is it? And then when we go to the capital expenditures, I liked in your presentation how you talked about the various individuals and departments who contributed to that. And I think that it would help to try to keep those together so that you're presenting an overview of areas, whether it's fire and rescue or restoration, so that we're not having to look all around and pick here, there, and everywhere. That, I mean, there are various ways that you could categorize. It could be by ward, it could be whatever. But for me personally, when you presented those individuals and the departments, that made sense to try to do that. And it's helpful. I hadn't seen before this carryover versus a present one. So it's helpful to see that. It may also be helpful during the year if the staff is able to put together progress reports that come to council slash the public. So that's similar to like the Water Services Board, when they took a project, and they itemize what has been expended, where things are at, and if there's an overview of what holdups are, then that would that would explain how things are happening and how they're lost. Sometimes, these numbers on the capital expenditures, they stay the same as the previous year. So you can make an assumption that perhaps it was just carried over. But other times, they're not the same. And so then you're wondering, well, has someone added to it or something different from it, and what for? And
Yeah, I think it would just be helpful to have those progress reports. The other is, as I look at some of these, such as, well, the Whistler Hollow land, and then some fencing, trails, lighting, things like that, I'm I'm thinking that we're being outmaneuvered sometimes by the developers, because these are really, they should be in a DA. And, you know, if we look at a full housing development, for example, the the lights, and you say that councillor Bruscielli suggested these lights, it's a great idea. But I would think that in a concept plan and beyond, that a developer would have actually said that. And I thought that in the bits that we get on the DAs when it comes through council, that it in fact is looking at landscaping and lighting and all of those things. So I think in some of these situations, unfortunately, we've been outmaneuvered. And it would be good if we could tighten those up. Because, yeah, they're great things to add in. And but I don't think we should be paying for them. But unfortunately, now, we probably are. And maybe in the future, we won't need to. I think Whistler Hollow is another good example where there is a full municipal board report where the developer got out of having green space and instead paid the RM 100,000. So here we are now spending 250,000. And I'm wondering, how did we come out ahead on that? And then the 250, I don't know if we then have to develop the land, or if that's all-inclusive, buying and developing it. Anyway, it's something that we probably shouldn't even have to be doing. It should have been done and paid for by then. But kudos to you. It's a good plan, great presentation. It was very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You can have Ms. Shaw speak to the notice, the two-week notice, a notice for the financial plan, because she has some comments you might make.
Oh, sure. Yes.
Yes, so I can just clarify on one item that Mrs. Alberg raised. The notice requirements was two advertisements in the Selkirk Record, which we did have additionally. It was posted here at the office. So we've met all the legislative requirements. And then I believe we'll answer the questions raised following everyone's comments. Is that fair?
Sure.
Next, registered for information is Eleanor Link.
Eleanor Link, 745 Rochac Road. Just on this last point. Yes, we fulfilled the legislative requirements. But I'm going to leave with council. The advertisement taken from the Selkirk Record of what St. Clements is doing, we can borrow good ideas. I'm going to be leaving that with you. We're having a public open house, which gives more opportunity for the public to be involved, which I think is always a good idea. I also, may I approach council and just pass this?
Please.
This has to do with what one of the points I'm making. If you just take one and pass it down.
Thank you.
That's not the first point. Discussions and decisions about the budget document were made by council. And you've come up with a wonderful document. But decisions were made by council as to what was included in this budget. There can be no denying that. And when were these decisions made? They were made at educational briefings. Is council not aware that no decisions are to be made at educational briefings? Those meetings are for learning purposes only. There's an ombudsman's report on record. You've all seen it, I think. All meetings where council decisions are made are to be conducted in public, according to the municipal act. That's that's a very important section in the municipal act. Now, for that document that I just gave you, controllable purpose number five in the tax levy bylaw, well, a small point that 5A, a small correction is needed. The mill rate is levied for the year 2023, not 2022, as stated in 5A. My concern, though, is 5F of controllable purchase, controllable purposes. 5F talks about the general reserve fund. It's a regulating bylaw, 5/2004, created for the purpose of setting aside funds for future capital works, structures, and equipment. That bylaw does not provide for an annual levy amount, or that the levy may be established via the annual financial plan or in some other way. An amendment to this very old bylaw establishing amounts expired in 2014. It's attached to the one I gave you. Bylaw 52004 is overdue for clarification by council. This is important because this levied amount is combined with other controlled purposes listed in number five of the budget This year, controlled purposes levied for every taxpayer in the municipality add 1.081 to the basic mill rate. Council needs to be guided by its bylaws. And it's overdue that this bylaw be looked Mrs. Mrs. Alberg, and I did not work together on our comments, but I have, I'm going to repeat sort of her concern about regular reports about projects, regular financial reports about projects. Because using the tax levy bylaw, it's impossible for the public to see how much a capital project actually costs over the years. The transportation plan, CO number 2022, on this document, is allocated 60,000. But it's been allocated 60,000 on each of four budgets since 2020. That totals 240,000. We cannot know if any funds have actually been spent on the transportation funds. If monies were not spent, then how much was spent? And what happens to that unspent money? Is it declared surplus? Is it just sitting in the reserve? Or is it used for other purposes? Other examples of repeats on capital expenditure projects, there's many of them. Asset management consultant, business park sign repeated, digital sign for the administration repeated, underground sprinklers for Sonova Accent Center Fields repeated, the Whistler Hollow green space plus a path and bench. Those are all examples and not the only ones of repeated projects. But we don't know where they are. But there was at least there was some attempt tonight to explain where many of them are, and that is much appreciated. Community notice boards were allocated a total of 72,870 in 2021 and 2022. No funds are allocated this year, so there's an assumption there. Have all those community notice boards in the RIM been replaced? Is the project finished? Now, there's CO number 13 on the budget document is the mural project. Where is Phase Two, the second mural project, to be located? I would be very interested in knowing the plans for that. The reason I ask about the location is because I believe that the municipal acts directs council to spend capital budget funds, any funds, on acquiring, constructing, or removing capital property. What municipal property or asset will be enhanced by this particular mural project? Is it going to go on municipal property? Then, a question about the purchase on PR number 23, five-foot-wide sidewalk plow. Now, I looked in the snow clearing policy, and sidewalks and trails were to come last, of course, in priority. Makes sense. All sidewalks or trails shall be cleared by of snow by municipal forces to the same standards as streets and lanes in the municipality. To my knowledge, this hasn't been this policy on snow clearing hasn't been changed. I understand now, though, that a private company takes care of clearing the sidewalks. And I'd like to know when council made the decision not to follow the current policy, but to hire? Or did somebody else make that decision and assume council would approve it? Also, on this item, I'd like to know if any attachments are included in the 140,000. Is this a skid steer? I think the RM has a couple of skid steers already. One or two I commented about PR number 32 on the on the document. The lighting around the pond in the trails developments for 40,000. I have the same concerns as Mrs. Alberg. Wasn't there a provision for this expenditure in the DA for the trails development? Is lighting within a development usually dealt with in a DA? Is this budget item setting a precedent for subdivisions to leave part of lighting requirements for the RM to supply? Final question. How can the budget, this budget, and I'm serious about this question, how can this budget be used by council members to monitor, to oversee, that expenditures seen on a monthly basis on payment registers are in fact within the budget? Oversight of expenditures is an expected duty of council member. And I believe, Mr. Mayor, you said that yourself at the beginning of your presentation. I agree wholeheartedly. And it is sometimes, well, it is, I don't know how one uses this document. And it is sometimes, well, it is, I don't know how, one uses this document to oversee the payment register. Something needs to be done, provided more information for council to be able to do that adequately, as far as I'm concerned. Thank you very much.
All right, the next person registered for information is Jerry Blenke.
Jerry Blenke, 354 Gardview Drive. I'm just going to give a little bit of my, how could I say? Recognition of through the past. And on the one billboard there, they had the diagrams about the development and this is how everything turns out. But what I want to caution the council is good development if the municipality needs it. Because if just development is going to be great for the municipality, the city of Winnipeg has been developing right to the borders already, and they're in a whole greater bond of money. So I don't think it's just development that's going to be great. It has to be a real stewardship of the money. And from what I've seen so far, I like. I think there's an openness and also a willingness to listen to the people. And it may sound like somebody has an agenda and always in one direction. But we had councils in the past that didn't listen. And I think it's really great that it's taking the time to listen. And if, if council is going to be listening to people, I think more people will come out and speak their mind. Because there's a lot of people watching, but they're not coming yet, slowly. But I think it will happen. But if, if nobody's going to listen or be argumentative to them, they won't come. And I think you need the feedback from everybody. I think you're doing a great job. It's a new council, not totally, but fairly new. But you're doing, this first budget is from carryover from the last budget. And, you know, you have to make a decision. It's not, it's no perfect budget, no matter what. And it'll be adjusted, but I think it's, it's in the right direction. That's what I have to say.
Thank you very much for those comments, Mr. Mayor.
Next registered is Glenn Rosong.
Sorry, what was the registered information?
For information.
Glenn Rosong, 3794, 3796 Main Street. I'd like to talk a little bit initially about, everybody in this room, I believe, lives in West St. Paul. I have never gotten personal about anything I've ever talked about with people from day one, ever. I have a passion for this community like nobody else, I guess. I don't present it sometimes as politically or, or whatever. Like lots of other people, I think things through. I think it's so simple to do things. And I then carry on. And we've been here since 1986. I have a very successful business down the road. And, you know, I don't want to say we're giving up on this community, but I want something done that, in 2005, when I ran, I started running for mayor of West St. Paul, I campaigned for a year on one issue. And that issue, Mr. Bakatam, because you might be the only one in this room that did not know that, the one issue is a soccer hockey facility. I received 49.9% of the vote on one issue, but I shook the hand of Cliff Dearman, congratulated him, and told him, be careful what you build. He built the Sonova Center. I said to him at the time, there are many people that voted for you that wanted a hockey rink. Since 2000, and I'm getting numbers mixed up maybe, in 2008, when Sonova was finished, and I'm, it's pretty close to that, I happened to get the highest recreation grant in West St. Paul's history, $575,000, I believe. Member of parliament was Joyce Smith. She's not a friend, but I talked to her, I worked with her, and we would have got more money. But Mr. Dearman said to Joyce Smith that the building was going to cost 1.2 million dollars. Let's just say it cost three. So we based the 575,000 on the 1.2 million, not the 3 million. So we lost half a million dollars. When a building in those days, we could have built a hockey rink two years earlier for 1 million dollars. But that didn't happen. In the last 14 years, this community has gone backwards when it comes to recreation. I am all in favor of this tennis thing, but I've never played a game of tennis in my lifetime as a recreational sport with referees and, and people and teams. The fact is that in the last three years, there's been a government grant out there that was giving 60, 6-0% for recreation facilities. I read the newspaper once a month. And every time I pick up the newspaper on such and such a day, I read about Dakota Sports Facility getting another 2-point-something million. I read about Steinbach making a $96 million investment in a sports facility. It's going to be the most spectacular facility in Winnipeg in, in the area. Niverville got $14 million of government money to build a $21 million facility. And they get a W, no, MJHL team. Steinbach's getting a WHA team, which is, I think, the Winnipeg Ice Moving, but we don't know that. The fact is that we're sitting here. We have all these developments and everything else. But according to your documents that you talked about, Mayor Trujan, in your first statement, it says this, maintain current infrastructure and plan for future development. That has not been done since 2006 adequately for my, I guess, my passion or my community. And it says, community vision. Well, I can tell you, I've been a member of the Lions Club. I was the unofficial, never, I was never on the recreation board. I was the person who came for 10-plus years and sat in the back of this room. And me and Bev Bragg did a newsletter for our community. I don't know how many years, nine, 10, 12, it doesn't matter. We made money, we built communities as good as we could. And then we did not build what I thought that we were going to get was a hockey rink. We built a gymnasium. And the fact is, you cannot build community without a hockey rink. And I am, enclosed hockey rinks, right, we have a hockey rink. I have never seen an official refereed hockey game in West St. Paul since 1986, living here, which is outstanding, astounding to me that that has not happened because the kids do not play outside hockey. And you cannot, we did, with the Lions Club, we did a community event in February. We did it for seven, eight years. I was the main corporate sponsor. And we would get 300 and 400 people to come to our event. If we had a weekend where we could have a hockey tournament and the same fun, family fun day, we called it, on Louis Riel Day, we would have had 500-plus people, families. It would be Canada Day, but in February. But we needed a hockey rink. And that hasn't happened. And, you know, I, I see all these other developments. Springfield got $13 million recently. Minnadoosa's getting, I think it's $11 million for an inside rink. The grant is for 60%, very simple. You take $5 million of our money and they match it. And that's automatic, it's in place till this day, it's been in place for three years. And, you know, I know these aren't, these things aren't cheap, but I have a group of people. If you want 50 people here next week and we form a committee to start working about getting this thing together, they'll come here. I've talked to these people forever. And these guys are, and they're mostly guys, but if you put a thing out, if I could put my little media thing out, there'd be a lot of women involved too. Because women's hockey is, I mean, it's incredible, the growth. But it's not going to happen in West St. Paul unless we cover things up. But I have only a few questions. The first question is, four years ago, there was a study done on getting a hockey rink built. I believe it cost $78,000 of taxpayers' money. Yes, the taxpayer money didn't come from West St. Paul. It came from a government grant from something or other. It has never been tabled to the council. I have no idea why it was never tabled. I would like to get a copy to read a report that was paid for by taxpayers. Maybe it wasn't West St. Paul taxpayers, but I'm part of Manitoba taxpayer. So I think that's a very simple document to get. I believe, I never filed a FIPA for it because I know the answer. Until it gets to the council table and gets read and passed and whatever else is, it does not become a public document. I had the same thing with West St. Paul School in 2000, how do you get the year right now? In 2010, they were told that they were flushing very low-treated sewage into the river. It took eight years for them to fix their problem, hook up to the city of Winnipeg. They were getting their sewers treated with oxygen. It took me four years to get that report because they never gave it to the trustees until I finally phoned the ombudsman. Once I got it done and read that and made it public, it took them another four years to hook into the city of Winnipeg. But that's, you know, I'd like to read that and what the, I know it says it's $10 million for two hockey rinks and blah, blah, blah. But we don't need two hockey rinks, we need one. We don't need a new building, we've got a building. We need one hockey rink covered up. There are plans. I believe the council, there's, there's a, a plan of the Sonova Access Center that shows the indoor hockey rink on it. I don't know if it's still up in, up in the rafters there, but I've seen it. And somebody made it, so somebody was dreaming big. But I question why we have all this development. But when it comes to recreation, we are lagging behind. Every community that I know of has an indoor hockey rink. I'm not asking for anything special, but we have a chance. If we make the indoor hockey rink an Olympic-sized rink with 400 spectators, we get federal funding, we get provincial and federal short track speed skating events held in our facility. This has all been run through 15 years ago with the different associations. They all loved it. And the fact is that you can be national Olympic events. And yes, Cindy Clausen's first coach is a West St. Poler. And Mr. Zaski has always said to us, they come here in droves. And, you know, I've always had a dream of sponsoring an Olympic athlete. But I couldn't, I can't afford anybody in soccer and hockey and everything else. But some, some 10-year-old kid that could speed skate. And if I walked up to him and said to his mother and dad, can I give you a couple hundred dollars? You know what they say to me? Thank you. And you ever know when that guy might be the, I might pick the gold, gold medal winner one guy. But the fact is Cindy Clausen started with a lady from West St. Paul. Nobody knows that, and she's, she's a Hall of Famer, isn't she? So, you know, I, I, I look at this budget and yes, it's your first one. I'm not throwing anybody under the bus. But, you know, there's three more years, which is going to go by really quick. And then there's another election. And, you know, I, I just, you can't apply for grants unless you do your homework. I understand that better than anybody. Just point me in the right direction and we'll get the money. We'll make it affordable, your taxes will not go up. Because in the end, what is all this development for in the end? And, you know, I'd like to have some, not questions from, from the council, but am I completely out of touch? That the only thing I saw in there about recreation was a new pickleball court at the Sonova Center. I don't even know what one looks like. But I guess it's a good thing to have. But, you know, that's not going to build community.
It's the fastest-growing sport around, pickleball.
Well, okay. But when it's raining, do they play it outside? The answer is no.
I'm not sure, you know, I don't play it myself.
No, they won't play it in rain because you'll slip, break a leg. But it's not an Olympic event. You got to think way past West St. Paul. Do not, I mean, pickleball will be, might be an Olympic event one day, but it'll be for the senior division.
I'll just tell you that John McEnroe and Andre Agassi just played pickleball nationally. So obviously, it's gotten big enough.
I've just agreed that it might be an Olympic sport one day. But hey, I'd like to know about that FIPA thing, or I don't want to do FIPA. People think you, when you do that, you're, you're getting upset. Well, I just want to read the report. And other than that, I, I, you know, I'm not thinking this is, we need a new curling room thing. It's, 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 the whole community is, there's, the best thing that's happening in the community recreational-wise is the tennis thing. But the fact is, can anybody tell me when the $5 million buildings are going to be built? And the answer is you can't. Because I would have known it, they were talking about it at the last Rogers Cup even, they mentioned Manitoba. It's going to be great when it's done, but it's not going to build community. Because that indoor court can have a, you can't have a dance inside there for the kids. But anyway, that's my little rant and nothing personal. And, oh, one other thing, because I do have half a minute, maybe. On Saturday at the Rivercrest Bar and Grill and Lions Club is having a pancake breakfast, and the money we raise for that goes to the bursary of three West St. Paul students in all the high schools. And we give $500 bursaries to each kid every year. And we're the first, not Rotary Club, but what do you call those? And we, we help the communities. When we were the first service club to give a $500 bursary times three, Seven Oaks said to us, nobody else had done that. Now every service club gives money to Seven Oaks for bursaries. And our little club with 22 members, and three quarters of them are not West St. Polers, has created, you know, they probably get $5,000 now for kids from other service clubs as well. Because when we proposed that, they said, well, nobody does that. I said, you mean Rotary and Kiwanis and that don't do that? Well, we just thought it was a good idea to do with our money. So I have tickets, if you need them, they're $15 a person. Anyway, it's, it's what we do. And this is what I do. And anyway, I'll let you talk about it at the end. It's, I'd rather talk to everybody personally and individually at the same time, but that's not how it works anymore, right?
But thank you very much for expressing that.
You're my counselor, I think, right?
I know that.
I had to say that, yes.
No, I don't. We did talk about it, so you don't. We did discuss it.
Next registered for information is Ron Luick.
Sure. Ron Luick, 1377 Miller Road. Sorry, I wasn't really prepared here. But I'm aware that there's a building permit or rezoning, I'm not sure of the terminology.
Excuse me, are you going to be addressing the?
Budget.
Budget, or you got something else?
Yes, I am addressing the budget, and I have to sort of come to it, though.
Okay.
When it comes to the, as far as the budget goes, the property beside us is the gun club. The revenue from that gun club, we don't know exactly what they pay or how, how it all works. But it's no longer a gun club anymore.
So how is this related to the budget?
I'm, we're trying to understand.
The gun club is a separate entity, it has nothing to do with West St. Paul.
Has nothing to do with West St. Paul.
We have no jurisdiction over that club, it's a separate entity. It's owned by some other It's owned by some other individuals. So we're just talking about what the money that we're gonna spend here and what our plan is for this year. So I guess you have to let us know.
No, that's fine. I was just, I was just misunderstood how exactly it works, so that's fine.
We know that you have some concerns about it.
Yep, lots of them, yep.
That's, that's, that's fine. It's done in a different form.
Yeah, that's fine. I will address it then.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Okay. And our last registrant, Heather Flick. Did you wish to speak?
Thanks.
So that's everyone that has registered. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak, either for a comment or for information? And so I would suggest it would be council's opportunity to respond to the comments and questions received.
Okay. Does anyone have any?
I'll go first.
You're the last?
Yeah.
Council Campbell?
Yeah, I don't, you know, I would just like to respond to one comment that Mrs. Link had said. I'm fairly well versed with what equipment that RM has. We do not own any skid steers at all as of yet. They do have a couple utility vehicles, Bobcat utility vehicles, but no skid steers per se. Just so that we're on the same page.
Thank you. I'll check my budget documents. Must have made a mistake.
Councilor Shale?
Yeah, I'd just like to answer just some comments to a couple of them. One was by Mrs. Alberg and Mrs. Link at the same time, concerned with the lights that we're putting in, I guess, at the Trails Development. Well, we're not developers. We're not builders. That's probably one of the first developments of its kind to come to West St. Paul. So do we miss things? Yes. And that's why in the next phase of Parkview, we actually added it into their development agreement. But to bring this one up to a safety standard, it was stuff that this council, we're collecting taxes out of there, has decided to put into there, and it is being added to their next phase in the development agreements. So we do miss things, and you try to make better. So that was one of the things here. Giving, the next one was by Mrs. Link on educational briefings. As you're fully aware, you sat through four years of those. Okay. You never sat through them, but you were on council for four years. So you can see that what we do during educational briefings is not making decisions, it's giving staff direction, which then comes to us to make a decision. Otherwise, there's no other form for council to speak with the staff, to get direction, to see the next steps. We put our wants in, we give direction, comes back to us at the proper meetings like this one, to set mill rate. And without open discussions in that forum, if you can look through, and I'm sure you have, what other form of meetings that council can set up to do this kind of work? It's not something that council can talk in an open forum to discuss.
They are in form?
I don't think you can. I'm just rebuttally.
First year in Cal.
Counselor Link, sorry, Mrs. Link, please.
Yeah, I'm gonna just stop right there. But that's our place to give direction to council, it's not making decisions, it's just giving permission. Thank you.
I disagree. Thank you.
Counselor.
Yeah, oh, just really quickly, you know, appreciate the feedback that we're receiving from the residents. It's always happy that, you know, part of the democratic process that we present, and we have a forum for residents, stakeholders to come up and say their piece and to reflect on the budget, whether it's concern or providing comments on it. That's always really healthy. And, you know, and thank you, Mr. Ressong, for coming out here, telling me a little bit about the history of your passion and your passion for the community. I appreciate that and hearing about the, your passion for the hockey rink. I do know that history, so it was nice to hear that. I think there's always a, there's always an opportunity to see that kind of.
Can I ever, ever embellish any of this? It's always accurate.
Counselor Clyber?
Okay, I'm gonna address a number of comments that were made. Mrs. Alberg, you mentioned deficit. That's in the audited financial statements that we went over previously in another council meeting. Sometimes there's a carryover from one year to the other year, and so I believe that our auditor went through that deficit, and it was basically a transaction that was carried over. So it's not a concern to us as council. Grants are, our staff is always looking for grants. Sometimes we get them, sometimes we don't, but there's an ongoing process. We have a list under the CAO reports. You'll see that if you look on the CAO reports of our agenda meeting, you'll see all the grants are being applied for and that are in process and what is received. We did add three new staff, as I recall. One in public works, one in recreation, and I forget, the third one was?
Plan.
On the office for planning. Sundry, sundry income, and our CFO can correct me if I'm wrong, but sundry income can be supplemental taxes. So sometimes we get supplemental taxes in after the taxes have been set out, and we'll have somebody who's in the process of building, they'll have a supplementary tax, and that would be income that does not go to the school division, comes to us because it's in a transition period. So sometimes that sundry can be supplemental taxes. You wanna add anything to that? Have I got it about right? Thank you. Okay, community notice boards. I'm not sure on that, if they're finished. I would assume they are finished. I'm getting a nod, so those community notice boards have been completed. The mural that was carried over is, we had a discussion on that as council and decided if we received a grant for that, that we would go ahead. If we don't get a grant, it would not go ahead. So just so you're aware of that. The previous mural was fully granted. Okay, that's the answer for that one. I wrote down snow clearing, but I don't know why. Oh, snow clearing, that was the five-foot plow. Reason that we're going with that is because the way that we're snow plowing right now is damaging properties because it's, our snowplow's too wide, and so it's damaging sod on people's lawns. So we have to buy something that is a proper size for the new developments. And that's why we're doing that expenditure. You asked about oversight. So for oversight, one of the things the mayor has been doing is quoting our transactions to match our budget. So when you see the payment register, when we do an expenditure for our capital expenditures, you'll see a quoted transaction that is then matched to that expenditure, capital expenditure. Am I correct in that, sir?
No, I'll bring it back.
Okay. The lighting around the pond is a safety issue. We have complaints about people tripping and almost falling into that pond, so we decided maybe some lights would be in order, that people wouldn't fall into the pond and get wet at the wrong time of the year. So it's a safety issue, and that's why we decided to expend that money. Also, we are looking at other things that we can do in the DA's. Green space, we learned our lesson from Whistler Hall, but we made a commitment to Whistler Hall to put together a park. And so this council was very adamant to continue on with that, to find a piece of land, and that is a land expenditure. That's how much the land has gone up over there. So the expenditure for equipment will come later. But we made a commitment, all of us, all five of us, we said absolutely, that was a promise, we're gonna keep our promise. We're also looking at possibly cameras in some of the new developments for theft. And so these are things that, you know, when you, when you have new developments going up, hindsight's 20-20. You find that there are gaps, right? And so now we're adding those gaps back into our DA's and saying, okay, we don't, we don't want our people to have to pay for the lights around the pond all the time. We don't want them to have to pay for cameras at entrances because of theft or contractors. That's on the developer. We need to put that into our development agreement. So we're learning as we go, and sometimes that costs money. It costs us some money to learn, but we're learning real quick. Then there was also the rink. And Mr. Ressong, I know your concerns, and we did talk about the rink. We'll probably continue talks. I know there was a feasibility study done, and I don't know if we can get that to Mr. Ressong, but I know that there, that on our last council, we had allocated funds. In the first year I was on council to complete the feasibility study. I know I spoke with Dino Bocetti, and he does have the feasibility study, or he knows it was completed. So whose hands it is in, I don't know, but we're, I'm sure that we can get that to you. Okay? I'm proud of this budget. We worked four days on this budget, line by line, every line we went through. We took off anything that wasn't necessary. We kept it as, I say, clean as we could, and I'm proud of the plan that we came up with as council. We, I think we did a good job, and we're working for the people to keep moving it down, keep your taxes down as much as we can, and still provide the services that you, that you should be getting. Thank you.
So just so you'd like to know, that's what these codes are? That's why those numbers are there, just so that when this comes in and they have to highlight this code when they do the tree planting, so that we know that's what it's for. And that's why this indicates that it was done last year, and this indicates that this is done this year. And one of the things that we as council made a commitment on is that we will do whatever we can, we'll make every effort possible to make sure that we do all of these things this year. That is our goal. It is, we do not plan to carry over anything. So I can't talk for the future, but that is our plan and that is our target. And I guess we'll see how successful we are at the end of the year. Go ahead.
Just one other item, you'll see the gymnasium divider and equipment storage. That was a really key thing for us as council, because it generates income for the access center. Now we can divide off the gym, we can have two parties in the gym and gain more rental. So that was a big thing. As far as the pickleball courts go, we are resurfacing, I believe, the rink, or we're painting the rink for the pickleball courts. That has blown up. We can't, we don't have enough space for pickleball in the gym, so we're taking it outside and putting pickleball courts. And that draws people to our community. And I think that's a very positive thing, is when we're drawing more and more people to our community, they find out more about West St. Paul and the people in West St. Paul. So there's a, there's a lot of good things in this budget. The food cycler program that Council Paktikan and I are excited about will be available to citizens, it's, I believe, a cost of a hundred and fifty dollars, and the rest will be subsidized. So we think that that is a tabletop compost machine that you can put in your kitchen and you can put your compost in, and it's gonna turn it into soil, basically, for you, for your garden. So that's a pilot project that we were very excited about, and I think that I've already had requests for it, so thank you.
And to add to that, I believe East St. Paul has started that pilot project, and they ordered five hundred, is that right? Five hundred?
Oh, five hundred?
Yeah, and it was gone within a month. That's how fast it went in the municipality. So we're expecting something similar. We debated about that, how much do we get? And we were scared to get too much, but if it is successful this year, then we'll look at getting some more next year. So once I, I'd like to thank everybody for coming, for your input. I will now close the public hearing. Be it resolved that the bylaw twenty twenty, sorry, I'm on the wrong one here. Be it resolved that Council of Umost Palace of West St. Paul do hereby close the public hearing and resume the special meeting of council. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Bichetti moves. Counselor Clyber seconds it. Can I call for the question, please? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? None. Carried. Now we go down to four point one, first reading of the tax levy of the bylaw twenty twenty-three. Be it resolved that the bylaw twenty twenty-three dash five, being a bylaw of the Umost Palace of West St. Paul to levy taxes for the year twenty twenty-three, be read for the first time. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Bichetti moves. Can I have a seconder? Counselor Campbell seconds it. Any comments, questions? None, hearing none. Can I call for the, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, are we giving first reading?
Yeah.
We will, we would like to request some amendments to the bylaw.
Okay, go ahead. Yes, that's right.
Um, so if the mover and seconder are in agreement.
It's amendments to the date, right?
Uh, so we have just a few. I'll go through them with council, as will our director of finance. The first is in five A. The correction to that year is twenty twenty-three, not twenty twenty-two. The next correction is in clause six. Another, just a typo, sorry, to change from Thursday to Friday, the twenty-ninth of September, for our due date. The next amendment we would like is on page one of the financial plan, and I'll let Ms. Shawada speak to that.
Yeah, so on page one, we do see a small deficit of two hundred and forty-eight dollars. This is due to a school tax difference for converted fees. So it's just a plug. It has no effect on our mill rate. I just have to plug in two forty-eight into the requisition column for schools. This is also the reason why the financial plan was not up at nine o'clock in the morning on the thirteenth. I was waiting for confirmation from our municipal services officer. And also the sixty-one thousand in new, next year's budget, that's an, it's a plug number, it's a plug figure. The reason being is, A, we don't know what our tax levy's gonna be because we don't know what our assessment's gonna be. We also don't know what our school requisitions are. So as recommended by our MSO, year after year after year, we make a plug in there to make it zero. And then come next year, when we know our actual figures, we remove that plug and it becomes current near budget. So are we okay with those adjustments?
Yeah. Okay, yeah, we are. Great. So I call for the vote. So go ahead, Counselor Clyber.
Yeah, I just wanted to put some comments on the record, just really quickly. As Counselor, just building upon what Counselor Clyber had said, you know, we spent a number of days putting this budget together, and I had a really good experience with working with everybody here. I think it was a very powerful process. Everybody was advocating for the RM as a whole, and I thought that was extremely healthy. And we're doing a number of things in terms of roads, and, you know, Mr. Mayor, I'm glad to see that Miller Road made it to the budget because it was one of the, it's one of the last major roads that's still a gravel road, and that we are taking sort of baby steps in doing it, and that we're gonna do an engineering study to make sure that we get the best cost and that we know exactly what we're getting into when we do that reconstruction of Miller Road. As Counselor Clyber says, it's exciting to see the food cycler program. I think that'll be a great program, I know, in the arm of, his arm of St. Andrews or?
East St. Paul.
East St. Paul, yeah. They did it, and it was like subscribed within, within days. So I mean, I think we'll have a really good turnout here. Really glad to be supporting the fire department. We have a number of pieces of equipment that we're getting, the ground monitor for the new pumper, a new thermal imager, positive pressure fans, fourteen VHF radios for every single member of the fire department. Another thing I know that Counselor Brusetti was advocating for was the underground sprinklers at the, for the ball diamond in the soccer fields. That'll be a huge benefit in terms of making sure that we have good playable fields and high-quality fields. Just, you know, and in general, I was really happy. This is a good budget, and I'll be supporting the budget.
Thank you, okay. Anyone else have any comments? Okay. All in, can I call for the vote, please? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None. Be it, now I move down to number five, the adjournment. Be it resolved that this meeting of council stand adjourned at seven thirty PM on. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Clyber moves. Can I have a seconder? Counselor Campbell seconds. Any questions? None? Can I call for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None. Thank you very much.